Yeah, says I'm absent. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:00 PM. We'll call to order the Sauk County Board of Supervisors. Hopefully, everybody's logged in on their tablets. I do not see any public here, but in case I'm wrong, if you did want to speak during public comment and you are a member of the public, we do have slips you need to bring up front, but again, I don't see any members of the public here this evening. So, it is 6:00 PM. The meeting's called to order. Do we?
First, we need to make sure everybody's logged in.
Is everybody logged in on your buttons?
Supervisor Clint. And Supervisor Pepper here?
Scanlon's gonna be late. Oh, and Dr. Pepper's not here. I think I might have known about that. Spend one of those weeks. It's only Tuesday. All right, can't wait. All right, I think we have everybody with their tablets on at this time. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
It sure has.
All right, let's take roll call. And I'm absent and I'm not even here. There we go. I think you can go ahead and click it. Scanlon, Pepper. Yeah, everybody's in that's here, so. Okay, so we have 28 supervisors present. One, I believe, is excused, one that is on his way, and one that who hasn't been seated at this time. So, we have a quorum. Item number three, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Supervisor Dieter, who did we call on this month?
Supervisor Eberle.
Supervisor Eberle, you have the floor. I should say vice.
Does history truly repeat? In 1921, just 100 years ago, Americans had become increasingly weary and confused about their future. They were experiencing foreign entanglements, seemingly endless World War I shortages, and economic disruptions, widespread labor disputes, violent strikes, millions of deaths from Spanish flu and lingering quarantines, and cities aflame with race riots and the hysteria of the first Red Scare. Warren Harding, the new president, had run his campaign from his front porch in Ohio. He promised a return to normalcy and a renewed focus on an American-first approach to foreign policy. His inaugural speech painted his picture of what was needed. America's present need is not heroics, but healing. Not nostrums, but normalcy. Not revolution, but restoration. Not agitation, but adjustment. Not surgery, but serenity. Not the dramatic, but the dispassionate. Not experiment, but balance. He went on, "The world needs to be reminded that all human ills are not curable by legislation, and that quantity of statutory enactment and excess of government offer no substitute for the quality of citizenship. The problems of maintained civilization are not to be solved by a transfer of responsibility from citizenship to government, and no eminent page in history was ever drafted by the standards of mediocrity. Moreover, no government is worthy of the name, which is directed by influence on the one hand and moved by intimidation on the other."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lynn. That was very nice. Okay, that brings us up to item number four, the appointment of county board supervisor district number nine. First of all, let me start by saying I somehow managed to inform Mr. Anderson that the meeting starts at 6:30. So, his non-appearance this time is on me and not him. What I would like to do, though, is, and I know we're not to the agenda, but we can consider this when we adopt it, go ahead and discuss the appointment of Mr. Anderson and then just administer the oath at such time as he arrives. So, if that'd be okay. And at this point, I am proposing or putting forward to the board Mike Anderson from Reedsburg to fill the remainder term of, I was gonna say Tommy Lee, but it would be the guy who didn't take his chair, Craig. Craig Rontzweig. All right, so I have that on the floor. Is there a motion to accept the appointment? A motion by Shell, second by Supervisor Rego. Is there any discussion on the motion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor, you may vote at this time. You can cast a vote yes to appoint him for, is there somebody in the queue? Why is, my lights aren't light enough, people. Thank you. Supervisor Datter?
I'm just curious, who is he? What did we know?
So, let me, so we only had two people apply for. One was Tommy Lee, and he provided me no context. The other was Mike Anderson. Mike has been a longtime resident of the county. I've actually known Mike myself since about 2008. He's lived, he was born and raised in the Wanniwock area. He was a real estate agent in Rock Springs for some time, and now he's working for a transportation company out of Reedsburg. Mike has lived there for a long time. He drives a lot of J-1 students around as a volunteer, and he was interested in this position, and outside of Tommy, he's the only other one. And based on conversations I've had with Tommy, and I know he was interested in it, I felt this was the best selection for the residents of that community. You bet. Getting used to these new screens. I don't know which one I'm supposed to touch. This screen is supposed to be over here. That's what happened to me. Okay, so seeing no other discussion at this time, you may vote on the recommendation at this time. We're ready to go ahead and vote now. We have 28 in favor with one supervisor absent and excused, one supervisor on his way, and well, a vacant seat, but we will congratulate Mr. Anderson when he gets here. And again, if it's all right with the board, we'll administer his oath when he arrives. Brings us up to item number six, motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Supervisor Spencer, second by Supervisor Rego. Again, I would just point out that we are going to veer from our agenda at some point when Mr. Anderson arrives. Is there any discussion on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. And item number seven, the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes from the previous?
I'm sorry.
It's not in the queue, so we'll take a voice motion. Voted by Klitsky, second by, second by Prosser. Any discussion on the minutes is presented. Please note that Supervisor Scanlon has arrived. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item number eight, general consent agenda items. We have before us Executive and Legislative Committee Resolution 642022 to honor Jeff Jelenic for over 15 years of service. That's on page four in your packets. We have a motion by Supervisor Spencer, second by Supervisor Rego. Is there any discussion on the?
That didn't change.
Oh, it didn't change. I'm waiting for the machine to catch up. All right, so let's do this by voice. Is there a motion?
It's on there. On ours it is.
It's not on ours.
Okay.
Yeah, it is on mine. Yeah, 642022.
You don't have to honor Jeff Jelenic for 15 years of service?
I don't, don't.
We do, but I never hit a button on that.
So, it didn't clear. Oh, you wouldn't have it because your buttons went away because somebody motioned, somebody seconded, so it's not an available option anymore. I'm guessing.
Let's watch it.
But you're saying you didn't push your button.
Never cleared.
Never cleared.
Okay, for the next one, let's really pay attention.
Let's really pay attention. Don't really pay attention now, just on the next one. Okay, well, y'all good with your motions and your seconds? Okay, any other, any other unusual discussion going into this right now? Seeing none, all in favor of resolution honoring Jeff Jelenic, please signify by trying to vote in the tablet and see what happens.
This is a voice vote.
It's a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We'll get there, folks. All right, item number nine, we do not have any scheduled appearances this evening. That brings us to item number 10. I do not see any public comment. If that is changed, wave your hand. So, we will move on to item number 11. We have communications. I don't have graniscus up, so if there's any new ones, you'll have to holler at me. We have a letter from Representative Pocan regarding the Manmount National Historical Landmark, and technically, it's not a letter. It is a beautiful letter with a plaque. It's fancy letter. And it says, "Dear Sauk County Historical Society, please accept my word of discretion and sincerest gratulations on the unveiling of the interpretive panels for the Manmount National Historic Park." And it goes on from there. So, thank you for Representative Pocan. What are we supposed to do with this? Give it to the queen? Beautiful. All right. We also have email from Jerry Burkett, Vilas County Board Chair, regarding levy limits, a letter from Rob Nelson, the city of Baraboo mayor, regarding ATV-U TV Highway Committee Proposal, and a letter from George Strandran regarding service excellence. And I assume that was for Tony, right? If I remember that.
Actually, for one of his staff.
For one of his staff, yeah. Were there any other correspondence that I'm not talking about? Okay. Onto item number 12. We have appointments. First, the, I'm gonna take these together, and do I do Jed separately? Or can we do them all as one? Okay, so we have appointments, item number 12. First, the Sauk County Board of Adjustment, Jennifer Evert New Evert, new appointment citizen member, three-year term, expiring 6/30/2025. We also have Sauk County Library Board. This is a switch next to, talking to Supervisor Chrysler and Supervisor Tealyn. They're switching their roles, so Joel becomes the primary on the Sauk County Library Board with Tim being the alternate. Note that Dr. Pepper has arrived. And then, for the South Central Library Board, Supervisor Tealyn becomes the primary with Joel Chrysler becoming the alternate. Their terms remain unchanged. And then, we have from the families comes first Comprehensive Community Services Coordinating Committee, Hillary Schrader, new appointment citizen member, Dennis Luther, new appointment citizen member, Renee Baker, new appointment citizen member. Those are two-year terms expiring on 6/18/24. I'm going to take those, well, I guess we have all appointments in the queue. Last but not least, the appointment of Sauk County Emergency Management Director Jed Seidel. Mr. Miller, would you like to speak to that appointment?
Let me find your button. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be recommending Jed to the Emergency Management Director position. We had over 20 applicants for the position, which I'm thrilled right now. We typically get four to seven, and we had 20. We conducted-
I don't know what happened. There you are.
We conducted the interviews, and it was a unanimous choice of the selection committee to recommend Jed to as the new Emergency Management Director. Jed comes to us from Lake Delton, where he has been the Emergency Management Coordinator for the last four years. Prior to that, Jed worked in the Wisconsin Dells Police Department for quite a few years, and then, prior to that, he was actually in the Coast Guard. I mean, they say that's a branch of the service, but I'm not sure. I don't know, Dell, is it a?
It is in the subsidiary of the Navy.
I'm just kidding, Dell. Dell is in the back, and I am thrilled to recommend him. It was unanimous from the committee to recommend Jed as our new Emergency Management Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on that note, we have a motion to approve all the appointments by Supervisor Klitsky, second by Supervisor Carver. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, we will go ahead and vote on the appointments at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, everybody, and congratulations Jed. Welcome aboard. All right, that brings us up to item number 13. Do we have any bills?
No.
Item 14, we have a claim for Gabriel Sowers. This is just for the purpose of presentation, it's a required process, but had number inquiries from supervisors about this, so I'll ask Corp Counsel to explain the claim and what the process is. You're on. Oh. They have a different mic for you, even though it doesn't exist.
Now it's on. All right. Can you hear me now? Any more? So, I have to have two buttons on for that mic to work. And stand up and project my voice. So, we received a claim from Mr. Sowers regarding damage to his windshield that he claims was caused by one of the highway department trucks. As with all claims, I forwarded on to our insurance company. They told us that we should disallow said claim. Mr. Sowers, via email on Monday, yesterday, was made aware of what the county's decision was and that the county board would be voting tonight on disallowing his claim. He has indicated that he will quote-unquote "see us in court." So, that's where the matter stands. Again, as it states in the notice of, or the disallowance of claim, we ought to provide that to him via certified or registered mail that will cut down the time period he has to bring that action in the circuit court. So, that's where we stand at this point in time. As your lawyer, I would request that if you are contacted by Mr. Sowers, that you not discuss the matter with him as the threat of litigation is pending. And anything you say, I guess, can and will be used against you in the court of law. So, that's where it is, and the resolution's coming up later in today's meeting.
All righty. So, we have next item number 15, elections. We do not have any elections that I'm aware of. We have everybody jumping way ahead on the screens here. And we have no proclamations. Under reports, information, no action required. Do we have a report from the clerk? Administrator Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First thing I want to do is apologize to the Healthcare Board of Trustees. I did not get the address for the appointment on the new one, and so, it's not on there, but it will be next month. So, second thing I want to say is I want to thank Jeff Jelenic for his 15 years of service to the people of Sauk County. I wish him the best in his retirement, and I think everyone would agree that he did a phenomenal job here as our Emergency Government Director. Next, I want to recognize Deputy Aaron Brooks and Deputy Andrew Kulis for their life-saving activities that they had. Do you want me to pause, Mr. Chair?
If you would, that'd be great. Supervisor Anderson, would you please come to the front of the room? We have a date with a judge.
And tell him why he's late.
Yeah, no, and I told everybody, this is my fault that you're not here, because I typed 6:30 in the email.
So, I wasn't losing it completely.
And the good news is, this may come as a bit of a surprise, but they actually voted for you.
You know, I was going to make one brief comment just when I was hoping to write off quietly into this.
All right, so if you would swap spots with the judge, he's gonna administer your oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Honorable Judge Skry.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Mike Anderson.
Aye, Mike Anderson.
Having been appointed to the office of Sauk County Supervisor.
Having been appointed to the office of Sauk County Supervisor.
District number nine in the county of Sauk.
District number nine in the county of Sauk.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, Mike, once you sign that, swing down around to the end, and you're in the second row on the end, you get to sit next to Supervisor Krieger.
Your mom's here.
Yeah, he does, actually. All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Back to you.
So, getting back to Deputy Brooks, on April 15, 2022, Deputy Brooks was in the changeover room with a male inmate. As part of the process, the inmate was to receive a shower. Deputy Brooks spoke with the inmate while the inmate was taking the shower, as the two were visually separated for privacy reasons. After a while, Deputy Brooks noticed the inmate had taken his towel from the window ledge. Deputy Brooks asked if the inmate was done, about done, and did not receive a response. Deputy Brooks looked into the shower to make sure the inmate was okay and found the inmate hanging from the shower curtain rod by the towel. Deputy Brooks radioed for assistance, and under the shower stall, Deputy Brooks managed to lift the inmate up to loosen the towel that was around the inmate's neck. He then lowered the inmate to the ground and checked for signs of life. When the nurse arrived on scene, she took over care. The inmate was transported to a local hospital, evaluated, and later returned to the jail. It is without a doubt that if Deputy Brooks had not intervened when he did, the inmate would have died by hanging. So, thank you, Deputy Brooks, for doing your job. On the eight, yes. On the evening of April 9, Deputy Kulis responded to a residence in the village of West Baraboo for a report of a male who was reportedly trying to kill himself. Deputy Kulis arrived within minutes. Upon entry into the home, he observed the male subject standing in the living room sharpening a large kitchen knife. The deputy attempted to verbally persuade the subject to drop the knife, but was unsuccessful. The subject raised the knife towards his own neck, and Deputy Kulis deployed his taser. After the initially ineffective taser deployed, the subject turned to face Deputy Kulis. Deputy Kulis then observed the subject was actively cutting his own neck and throat with the knife. Deputy Kulis deployed a second taser cartridge, which was effective, and the subject stopped harming himself, dropped the knife, and was able to be secured in handcuffs. Deputy Kulis then began rendering first aid, which included applying pressure to the significant neck laceration. Throughout this incident, the subject indicated an intent to harm himself and a desire to die. Deputy Kulis' intervention in this incident prevented the subject from harming himself any further. The cut had nearly struck arteries and other vital structures in the throat. Although the armed subject presented a potential threat to his own personal safety, the deputy chose to use an electronic control device in an attempt to stop and disarm the subject. The subject survived his injuries after receiving additional emergency medical care at the regional hospital. So, two outstanding deputies and employees that we have at this county, and I think it says a lot about all the county, or the employees that we have here at the county. The next thing I wanted to touch base on is I'm fairly excited about this. For those new members on the board, Sauk County took the initiative with our Huber inmates and created a training program to train them, and we are going to be renting it. We have rented a facility that they will be using, and the National Association of Counties has invited me to come and speak at the national conference to show how they were using ARPA funds to getting America to work, strategies for investing federal funding, using ARPA funds in community workforce development. ARPA is American Rescue Plan Act funds, for those of you that are new to the board. So, I will be speaking at the National Association of Counties in Colorado. We will be talking about the process of rebuilding and retraining local workforces impacted by COVID-19 and using the ARPA funds as a key funding resource. Various funding streams will be also discussed on how fellow county leaders are brading them together to invest in conducting jobs, retraining older workers, partnering with colleges, providing wraparounds. Those who will be speaking at the event are a representative from the White House, a commissioner from Seminole County, Florida, and a commissioner from Tulsa County, Oklahoma, who are the equivalent of county board supervisors, they just have a different name in those states. Dr. Rebecca Watts from the Northwestern Governors University, and Ron Painter, the president and CEO of the National Association of Workforces. The reason that the National Association of Counties found this, they found it actually in the Baraboo News Republic, looking for information on how ARPA funds had been used, and they want to hear about Sauk County's partnership with People Helping People, the Workforce Development Board of South Central Wisconsin, to develop a training center for people and on work release, which will be trained by local contractors and local manufacturers. So, that is a big thing, and that is why you have a resolution on your agenda for the chair to attend. I thought, I suggested to the chair, I didn't think it was appropriate that I go without a county board supervisor there, because it was not, I was the conduit to bring it to you guys. You guys are the ones that voted on it, so kudos to you for that. The next thing is, we have started, and Dennis, I'm thrilled about this, because it's, I've only been here almost two years, and it seems like we've been working on it since before I got here, but they have started construction on the runways at the airport. Woo-hoo! I'm thrilled about it. And by September, end of September, they will actually be digging the ditch and getting the water part of it done at the airport, so that is huge. For those of you that don't know, right now, in that part of the county, through one of the employers down there, we bring in about $14 million in salaries alone to Sauk County. That airport plays a huge part in that. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Onto the chair's report. First of all, I just want to piggyback off of what Brent was saying about the People Helping People. One, I think this is an awesome opportunity for us to showcase the work of Sauk County at the national level, but when, I remember when it was actually Jared Pinkus, I believe, brought Brent over to meet Bill Harris, and he was so fired up by that, he was like, "You've got to meet Bill Harris." And I was like, "I've seen him at broadstands, I've been dying to meet this guy." So, we went over and met with him, and I remember after a couple meetings, he just, he just looked at me and says, "Oh, I hate all this government stuff, never, nothing ever happens. It's always you politicians and lip service." And I looked at him, I said, "Bill, we're gonna get this done." And here we are. So, this is great. Thank you all for that. So, little learning lesson here. So, with Supervisor Anderson coming on, it turned out that Supervisor Roxton couldn't attend the meetings of the Board of Adjustment, so I attempted to appoint Supervisor Anderson to that, where our sharp legal analyst, Corp Counsel, pointed out to us that under a state statute, a member of the Board of Adjustment actually cannot live in a municipal area, which one lives in the city of Reedsburg, the other in the village of Lake Delton. So, neither one of them concern, and that did not solve my problem. So, I'm reaching out to you guys, saying you don't need to contact me tonight, but go and think it over, and if you would, if you have a committee that, let's say, the time's not working out for you, please let me know, because right now Supervisor Anderson has no committee assignments, which he actually said a light committee load is fine, but if we could get, if we could get one for him, that's great. So, if you have a committee, and that happened last term with Supervisor White Eagle, she couldn't make the meetings, and I couldn't find anybody to swap with her. So, if you have a meeting that's not working out, let us know, and we can talk to Supervisor Anderson and make that swap. And then, yeah, you don't have to worry about going to Board Adjustment. You're just done, man. All right, so, and I, the only other thing I had, I congratulate Supervisor Burchill coming in like a terror. She went to her first, the River Wiscon, the Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission, where she was elected the third treasurer for the organization, so if the first two die, she's out. But congratulations, girl. I suppose if they can't attend a meeting, right? If that's how it works, okay. That's all I have this evening, folks. Let's, let's move on, unless there's anything else somebody here has forgotten. Yes, sir, Dr. Pepper. I'm not sure I want to yet.
Are you ready? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, who did you appoint to the Board of Adjustments?
Show up on time, we'll tell you next time. All right. Supervisor Mike Anderson, he's sitting two rows in front of you, he just waved. You're welcome. I thought we were just talking about that. Was I wrong? Oh, okay. Item number 13, unfinished business. We have none. Brings us up to number 19, New Business Executive and Legislative Committee. First up, Ordinance 7, 2022, an ordinance to amend the Ordinance Section 1.001, creating the final county supervisory district plan. With, oh, yes, thank you. Hang on. I'll get there. We have a motion by Supervisor Polivka, second by Supervisor Rego. Before we go any further, I would like to point out what we would lovingly refer to as some Scribner errors, and we'd like to thank Supervisor Burchill for reporting and doing her due diligence. I will say that we, we were talking between Brent, Becky, myself, I don't know if we should include the lawyer guy in this, but we had a rough week. Line 13 should say November 9th, 2021, instead of 2022. Same with line 26, it should read 21 instead of 22. And line 66 should say 22 and 21. So, those are the Scribner errors. We'll accept them as amendments to the resolution. And Supervisor Polivka, would you care to speak to your motion? Supervisor Rego? All righty. Is there any discussion on Resolution 7, 2022? Seeing nobody in the queue, we will go ahead and vote on the resolution. Now, if he, your sole instructor here is the guy to your left. At any time you need to phone a friend, just raise your hand. You may vote on Ordinance 7, 2022 at this time. All right. Thirty-one in favor, with nobody in opposition, no supervisors absent or excused or abstaining. That, or resolution, that ordinance passes. Brings us up to Resolution 65, 2022, to disallow the claim of Gabriel Sowers. We have a motion by Supervisor Spencer, second by Supervisor Shell. Supervisor Spencer, do you care to speak to your motion?
No, I wouldn't, Mr. Chair.
You would or would not?
Would not.
Okay. Supervisor Shell? Could somebody do me a favor before I forget? Can we get IT to switch this back? Okay. So, any supervisors care to speak or raise any issues with this at this time? Supervisor Roxton?
I'm just curious, why are we disallowing it? I thought the claim seemed genuine.
It was on advice of our insurance company that we were doing that.
Okay.
Yeah, we generally disallow all claims that are made.
I think we have to physically program it.
Oh, done? Do I hit that one?
Yeah, you don't have to do it right now. I just meant for the next meeting. I thought if you could easily just go tap, tap, tap.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer your question, Supervisor Roxton? All right, beautiful. All right. Any other supervisors care to speak to this resolution? Seeing nobody in the queue, you may vote on Resolution 65, 2022 at this time, to disallow the claim of Gabriel Sowers. You may vote now. We have 30 supervisors in favor, with one supervisor opposed. The resolution passes. That brings us to Resolution 66, 2022, to permit the county board chair to travel out of state to a National Association Counties event. We have a motion by Supervisor Lore, second by Supervisor Gruber, and again, another Scribner's error. It should say 21st day of June 2022, rather than June 2021. We'll accept that as corrected. Supervisor Lore, do you care to speak to your motion?
Have a good time, Mr. Chair.
Well, that's not the goal, but thank you. Supervisor Gruber? I'm sorry, they messed me up so bad. Yes, sir.
That was a one-way ticket, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was just checking.
My wife asked it to be. Do any other supervisors care to speak to the resolution before us? Seeing none, you have Resolution 66, 22, 2022. You may go ahead and vote on the resolution now. Thirty-one supervisors in favor, with nobody in opposition, and nobody absent or excused. That brings us up to Resolution 67, 2022, to ratify the previous decisions of the Law Enforcement Judiciary Committee when acting as two separate committees. Again, we have a Scribner's error that was caught. Again, it should say the 7th day of June 2022, rather than 7th day of June 2021. We'll go ahead and accept that as a correction. And we have a motion by Supervisor Carver, and a second by Supervisor Dorner. Supervisor Carver, do you care to speak to the question?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Dorner?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there anybody who cares to speak to the resolution before us? Seeing nobody in the queue, you have before you Resolution 67, 2022, to ratify decisions of the Law Enforcement Judiciary Committee when as, when acting as two separate committees. You may vote on the resolution at this time. We're still waiting for Bill. He's not here. He's not in the room, so, oh, he got a phone call. Here he comes. Thirty-one in favor, with nobody opposed, and no supervisors absent or excused. The resolution is passed. That brings us on to the Finance Committee. You have before you Resolution 68, 2022, assigning funds as of December 31st, 2021, and amending the 2021 budget. We have a motion by Supervisor Krieger, second by Supervisor Klitsky. Supervisor Krieger, do you care to speak to your motion?
I do. I'll try to make it brief. First of all, this is an annual exercise, and, but because we are amending the budget, requires a two-thirds approval. It's really three-pronged. One takes care of the, of transfers from the contingency fund, and this is the very reason we have a contingency fund, to, for those departments that over exceed their budget for the previous year. And by our, by our finance policy, the, as soon as they know that there's the possibility, the committee, the department has the responsibility to report that possibility to finance, and all of, all of the three departments listed made us well aware of the problem as soon as they knew that it might exist. The second prong of this is for departments that exceed their expenditure limits of their budget, but this has been covered by grants and other sources of revenue. And you'll find those listed on page two of the resolution. But probably one of the things that, especially for the new members, that is important to the Finance Committee, is the paragraph that spells out that within, when the board voted to go ahead with the new highway building projects, it borrowed $45 million, but we recognize that if the cost exceeds, that we were willing to spend up to $50 million collectively on those buildings. The other $5 million, and for the new supervisors, this may make little sense, but we exceeded our sales tax revenue by roughly $2.5 million last year. And so, at the end of the year, that excess got transferred into the general fund. But we wanted to make sure that we took that excess sales tax revenue from last year, and if we did exceed $45 million on these buildings, that it would be paid for, that overage would be, that excess of $45 million would be covered by the sales tax revenue, and then the other would come from the existing fund balance. So, there's a total of $5 million that we are going to take, up to $5 million to take out of fund balance, to fund up to $50 million on, on this project. And I hope I've, I hope I've made some sense trying to explain that with sales tax went into the, it, every year, it goes into fund balance. So, we don't have a separate, we don't have a separate account for sales tax revenue exceeded. It all goes into fund balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Klitsky, do you care to speak to your second?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other supervisors who care to speak to the question before us at this time? Seeing nobody in the queue, you have before you Resolution 68, 2022, assigning funds as of December 31st, 2021, and amending the 2021 budget. You may vote on the resolution now. So, we have thirty-one supervisors in favor. It required a two-thirds vote, so it is passed with nobody in opposition. That brings us up to item number C, Land Resources and Environment Committee, Resolution 69, 2022, to reward a contract for design and engineering services for the horse campground at White Oak, or White Mound County Park, found on pages 38 through 39. Motion by Supervisor Spencer, Bob, and, not the other one, and seconded by Supervisor Polivka. Supervisor Spencer, do you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Polivka, do you care to speak to your second?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is pretty much self-explanatory. The staff, along with the county, is, has plans to improve and expand the campground at White Mound, and that's what the services are for.
Thank you. Are there any supervisors who care to speak to the resolution before us? Seeing nobody in the queue, you have before you Resolution 69, 2022, to award a contract for design and engineering services for the horse campground at White Mound Park. You may vote on the resolution at this time. We have thirty-one in favor, with nobody in opposition, nobody abstaining. Resolution is passed. That brings us on to Ordinance 8, 2022, an amendment to approve a map amendment, rezoning of lands in the town of Greenfield, from resource conservancy to a commercial zoning district filed upon State Road 113 LLC. Property owner Michelle Gillette, registered agents. We have a motion by Supervisor Terry Spencer, seconded by Supervisor Kinsman. Supervisor Spencer, do you care to speak to your motion?
I do not, Mr. Chair. I'll let Mr. Kinsman talk to it.
Supervisor Kinsman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. This is basically just a business. We're just kind of bringing it up to date. They developed it, and it's improper zoning for what it is.
Okay. Are there any other supervisors who care to speak to the ordinance amendment at this time? Seeing nobody in the queue, you have before you Ordinance 8, 2022, approving a map amendment in town of Greenfield, filed by property owner Michelle Gillette. You may go ahead and vote now. Thirty-one supervisors in favor, with nobody in opposition or abstaining. The ordinance is adopted. Brings us up to Resolution 70, 2022, from Land Resources, to authorize participation in the state of Wisconsin Off-Highway Motorcycle Trail Grant Program. Is there a motion on this item? Motion by Supervisor Kinsman, seconded by Supervisor McCullough. Supervisor Kinsman, do you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you. It's pretty self-explanatory.
And Supervisor McCullough?
This is an annual action. It just gives us permission to get the funds for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other supervisors who care to speak to the resolution before us at this time? Seeing nobody in the queue, you have Resolution 70, 2022, authorizing participation in the state of Wisconsin Off-Highway Motorcycle Trail Grant Program. You may vote on the resolution now. We have thirty-one supervisors in favor, with nobody in opposition or abstaining. The resolution is adopted. From the Land Resources Environment Committee and Finance Committee, you have before you Resolution 71, 2022, to amend the 2022 LRE budget to include funding for a stream bank project at the county farm. Motion by Supervisor Krieger, seconded by Supervisor Kinsman. Supervisor Krieger, do you care to speak to your motion?
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think there are two important parts to this, and the first is that this is a result of a water quality discharge agreement that the county entered into, I believe in 2020, with the village of Loganville. As part of that, the village of Loganville had to seek out constituents or property owners that would help, that would, that they could work with to reduce the phosphorus load on their plant. They came to the, to the county, knowing that we had a stream bank project on our county farm. This, this is the former site of the Sauk County Healthcare Center that we still own. For those of you that are new to the board, this, the former board adopted the master plan for that acreage in the last term. And this stream bank project and the improvement was identified in that plan. And so, the second part, I think, that is important, is that there was no doubt that we should do the project. It is where the funds should come from. It was suggested at one point that we use ARPA funding. Both the LRE Committee and the Finance Committee unanimously, unanimously approved taking it out of, out of our fund balance, being the fact that we had identified this plan. So, therefore, it was no surprise to us, and so that if ARPA funds were not available, the general fund balance would have been used. And so, that is what this resolution stipulates. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Kinsman, do you care to speak to your second?
No, thank you. Marty described it well.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Flint, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem with the actual resolution itself. The funding is the issue that I have. I have deep respect for the committee work that we do. It's a breath of fresh air over what we had a couple of terms ago. That said, I was on the village board in Linden Station. I was a former mayor, and every dollar was tough to come by. This resolution asks that Loganville basically pays two-thirds of the cost of this project to the tune of $153,000, and the county would pay approximately $50,000. I'm sorry, would, the county would pay $102,000, I'm sorry, and let me back off here. The cost to the county would have been $50,665. The remaining $102,000 would be paid by the village of Loganville. I would propose a friendly amendment, that the funding for this project be 50/50, that the village of Loganville is taking on quite a hit. This is a small town with little or no prospects of growing, and that's an awful hit for, for a small town. And I would ask that, because the entire stream bank is on county land, that a 50/50 spread would be better, and that would result in the county funding $76,765, and the village of Loganville, the same figure.
Say the number again.
As a friendly amendment, I would like to propose that, please.
Seven seventy-six.
$76,765.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the resolution to, by Supervisor Flint, seconded by Supervisor Pepper, to amend the motion to read 50/50 exchange, with each, the county in Loganville being responsible for $76,765, and lawyer guy's got something for us.
I guess with the line numbers here, I think we should, for, for the clerk gets mad at us.
Thank you.
Figure out what the line, what the, the actual amendment should be based on the line numbers. So, I think, looking at that, it should read, on line 28, should read the county of no more than 50% of the overall estimated project cost. The estimated cost will go to line 29, that doesn't change, to the 153. As a result, the cost, line 30 would then be amended to, $50,665 would be amended to $76,765, and then the $102,866 would be amended to $76,765. So, I think those...
Respectfully, Counselor, for, line 42 also.
Well, I haven't read down that far. All right. Yes, and then, you are correct, sir. Line 42 needs to be changed. The, the dollar amount needs to be changed. The dollar amount needs to be changed to seventy-six, seven sixty-five. And then I don't, let me keep scrolling. Nope, I think we're good. There's nothing in the fiscal impact about those numbers, so.
Okay, so Supervisor Flint, I believe you spoke to your motion. Supervisor Pepper, did you want to speak to your second on the amendment?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so we do have some supervisors in the queue. We did, they all disappeared. All right. Oh, they're back. Well, oh, because probably because of the amendment, they reset the queue. The old queue went away, new queue is up. Supervisor Polivka, you have the floor. Oh, wait, I gotta get over here in the... You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate what Supervisor Flint is saying and that, but I think we also have to take into consideration here that many of the municipalities within our county have to pick up the full load. And are we going to be willing to tell these other municipalities that we'll go fifty-fifty on their phosphorus plans?
Thank you. Supervisor Detter, you have the floor.
Thank you. So per this, they have allowed the limit to go past the agreement somehow?
So would it be all right if I kind of paused? Lisa, would you like to explain the history on this? I'll bring up...
I reserve the rest of my three minutes.
You betcha. I've paused it, I'll save it.
So the history is this. The Loganville needed to get their WPDS permit. When they received their WPDS permit, most water treatment facilities have found that their phosphorus levels that they can discharge have decreased significantly, which means that they either have to upgrade the facility, enter into what we call the MDB funding that we receive, or do water quality trading. So they worked with one engineer that kind of determined the water quality trading route was the best for them, so they reached out to us. We came to some kind of an agreement. The issue is, is that Loganville is not a very wealthy community. Obviously, they're very small. So we identified four potential projects, and all four of those projects would have to be completed in order to meet the requirements of the permit. And one of those is the county farm. So Loganville reached back out to us and asked if there was a way for us to kind of help them since it's on our property. And that's when we came back to the LRE Committee and the Finance Committee to kind of have that discussion.
So I guess I'm confused. Is it our fault for having too much phosphorus coming into the system? Or is it their fault for not handling the right amount of phosphorus?
No, it's just that the permit systems have changed. So I mean, I can tell you, I was an administrator for a community. We had a WPDS permit renewal, and our phosphorus level as well was supposed to decrease, and we had to kind of make that choice. And that's based upon the DNR's TMDLs, so they review kind of the phosphorus limits that are already in the water and then determine what you're allowed to discharge. So it's really nobody's fault. It's just that the permit requirements changed, which then trigger all of the municipalities to either make changes to their facilities to meet those permit requirements or kind of do something different.
In short, they changed the rules.
Yes.
But I mean, it's always somebody's fault. Well, the DNR. They changed the standard. So is the preponderance of the weight of the problem on us or Loganville, or what?
It's not the preponderance of nobody necessarily.
Yeah.
It wasn't a problem that they created.
So the DNR determines those limits. I mean, we really don't have any say when they come in to review our facility and give you the permit. Those are just the limits you're required to meet.
And any other thing in land, everything's always grandfathered in, so the state should pick this up, or what?
There is no grandfathering when you're talking about WPDS.
You know, if this were something like a landowner had, I'm just going to use this because I'm familiar with the current situation, a culvert that wasn't meeting their needs, but it was handling our needs as a county, we would just say, you can spend that money because it's not meeting your needs, but it's meeting our needs. In this case, as a county, what are we really responsible for? I mean, I want to help Loganville if that's what we're supposed to do, but I also don't want to be irresponsible to the rest of the taxpayers on setting a precedent that this is or is... I'm just trying to get, where are we, where are we on our responsibility thing here? If it's fifty-fifty, I'll take it. If it's all of our fault or all of our responsibility because it's on our land, I'll take it. But I think right now, we are setting a precedent that the next county or community can come in and go, well, you did this. So I don't know, what do we got, what are we talking about here? Somebody be more clear than, other than they moved the goalposts and we got to just deal with it. Please.
That unfortunately is kind of the answer. So the DNR sets the permit requirements, and because all of these facilities discharge into the waters of the state, which are the lakes, streams, rivers, that's kind of where the DNR gets the authority to kind of set those permit limits. So once they set the permit limits, these facilities are struggling. So Reedsburg did MDB because they can't afford to make all the necessary changes to the facility. I mean, they're just kind of stuck. So it's not only the county's fault, it's not really Loganville's fault. It's Loganville opted to work with the county for water quality trading, and one of the projects we identified in their watershed just happens to be on the county farm. Does that kind of make sense?
I think it makes about as much sense as it's gonna. We would be working with the farmer and expecting them to make some change. Would it be more forceful? I mean, that's part of it, right?
I mean, when we work with a farmer for conservation-type practices, we offer cost share, we offer cost share.
I can't wait for Dr. Pepper's answer on this. Okay, so we've run out of time. Thank you. I gave, I did give him a little extra time because we engaged in some back and forth. Dr. Pepper, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I represent the Loganville area, and I wasn't aware of any of this. I was not notified. I just went ninety, threw ninety-six emails, and not one email was sent to me about this. So it's a little bit disturbing, so I'm a little bit blindsetted here. I'm glad that Mr. Flint proposed the fifty percent split because Loganville has limited funds.
Yeah, Supervisor Pepper, I don't mean to scream foul on this, but we are all provided this Granicus system to monitor committee actions.
Normally, when something comes through LRE, I get notifications when it's in my district.
When it's a land use application, this is a little different.
This is a little different.
This is a little different.
This has more money going through it.
That may be, but under state statute, under land use for zoning issues, there's a notification requirement.
Nobody told me this before tonight either. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm always glad to help whenever I can.
Well, you're too helpful sometimes. So I'm just thankful that Mr. Flint proposed this. I would encourage people to vote yes on this amended portion of the resolution.
Thank you. I'm going to be pushing the wrong screen all night long. These were the other, yesterday morning, they were this way. All right, Supervisor Gruber, you have the floor. Order? No, I thought two was on. Where's Joan? There you are, Joan.
Don't kick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you or somebody confirm for me that twenty-six thousand dollars is not going to have a financial unanticipated impact? I know it says coming out of the general fund, but I don't like to make that kind of a change unless I know we have adequate funds to do it.
We have approximately eleven million dollars in the unassigned fund balance right now.
Thank you.
Supervisor Prosser?
Just a question for clarification, since Supervisor Krieger refers to all of us as new every time, so I was, you know, trying to understand the process. So Mr. Supervisor Flint was on, is on the committee that signed this to approve it as it was. So I'm wondering if there was a discussion at, unless, was there a discussion about this resolution in the committee? And then you signed it and agreed to it, and then you changed your mind at the board? I just, I'm just trying to figure out how the process works.
There was actually discussion in if it would be all right with the body. Supervisor Krieger actually chairs both committees and would have the best story to tell. If I push the right button, you're up.
Thanks for the opportunity because I wanted to correct these. As I said in my statement, this, both the end result or the end motion, the last motion was unanimously approved by both committees. I can tell all supervisors present that they're, in fact, I believe, at the LRE Committee that I suggested that we do fifty percent, and that amount was reduced to thirty-three percent. I can tell you that I believe one of the contributing factors in that reduction from fifty percent to thirty-three percent was the fact that while we had identified this project in the master plan, that we were actually honoring the village of Loganville's request to move this up in priority with the county to do it before the other three private landowners in order to placate the DNR, that the, actually, that the village of Loganville was making progress on this effort. And so actually, you know, that's why it's here tonight. If but for the request from the village of Loganville, you would not be seeing this tonight. But I can tell you that we started at fifty percent. It went down to thirty-three percent at the LRE Committee, and that amount was unanimously forwarded to Finance. The fifty percent level was discussed at Finance. I believe the motion to set it at fifty percent failed on a three, on a two-for, three-against motion. And so then the subsequent motion of taking the recommendation from LRE was unanimously forwarded to this body with the knowledge that Supervisor Flint intended to introduce the amendment as he has on the floor tonight.
Thank you. Did you, that answer your question, Bob? Supervisor Kinsman?
Thank you. I think Marty described what, a lot of what I was going to say. The other thing is, I mean, as Marty said, there are some other private projects because our project will not meet the requirement that they need for the phosphorus loading. And they're actually getting that funding mostly from Equip, and then the village is kicking in the portion that Equip doesn't cover. So we're kind of doing the same thing with the village in that case. And I think the committee really wanted to see that the village had a fair bit of skin in the game because we do have other municipalities on these watersheds, and we want to make sure that, you know, they're paying their fair share. We understand that everybody's, you know, cut for funds. But, you know, if another, another, you know, project should present itself from another community, we would like to be able to, you know, for the parity, to be able to do, you know, work with them as well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Lor?
Yeah, I'll make this brief. I just wanted to touch base on, for, the LRE Department just finished a master plan for this farm. And I think it's really important that everyone understands that in the master plan, in the long term, this money was going to get spent to improve this project anyways. So as Marty said, all we're doing is bumping it up. I am the one that made the motion to move it from fifty percent to thirty-three percent. That motion did pass. My reasoning was, I think, based on the premise that we were going to spend this money anyways eventually, I think it's a good move, both for the, you know, for Loganville and for the county. But I felt personally that fifty percent was too high, and I think, you know, it was a fair move to drop it down to thirty-three percent. That motion did pass. With that said, the arguments that I have heard this evening, while I fully understand them, are basically that the village of Loganville does not have the, you know, a big, big fund to do this, and I get that. But I also, I don't know how well that argument sits with, you know, the taxpayers of, you know, District Twenty-Six. We, in my view, we can't make bigger donations to, you know, for arguments that are in, in just, what am I trying to say? I'm trying to say it's too much. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been listening to this back and forth, and I find that, that to some extent, it boils down to what's going to get it done. And if we go with the thirty-three percent, or thirty, yeah, I think thirty-three percent, that's accountable to the, to the county, it sounds kind of punitive to Loganville. I don't have, I don't, I don't know if they can afford it. It doesn't sound like they can. So what's going to happen is it probably won't get done. And, and so I think as we go around the county and as we look at types of issues like this, that I think that we have to be individualistic, and we have to look at it, and what is it going to take to get it done and get it done properly? And my sense is, whereas before I was, thirty-three made sense, I think probably fifty percent is probably going to be a lot more palatable to Loganville and to, in order to get this accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Donner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question, or correct me if I'm wrong, I had a couple of items. Sauk County is under no obligation to assist with this project at all. It's basically Loganville's problem, and if we decide not to help them, they're still going to be, even though the project is on our property, they would still be liable for the whole cost of the project? Lisa? Why did you go sit down? Did that look comfortable back there? Welcome back.
Yeah, so as part of the water quality trading agreement, we did offer technical assistance to help design some of these projects and then help facilitate the discussions, I guess, with the landowners that are involved. So we do have some skin in the game, I guess, just due to that water quality trading agreement.
Do any of the other potential projects, do they, so if these other projects are on private property, then the cost of those projects would be between the village of Loganville and...
The landowner, yes.
All right, and then my second point is, this project that's on the, on our property, on the county farm property, was that identified as a project that we were going to do before Loganville's request to use it as a way to reduce their phosphorus load?
Well, as everybody's kind of mentioned, it's been a part of the discussions to go into the master plan for the county farm, is to do something with this stream bank so that it could serve as kind of an example to other farmers that may have stream banks or whatever on their property. So it's always kind of been the idea that that happened. It was just identified as a project because it happens to be in the watershed, it happens to be on our property, the DNR wants to see something happen now to show that they're going to meet their permit requirements. So this is kind of an easy, easier one in comparison, I guess, to the other three.
So even without Loganville's request or need, we were going to do this project on our property anyway?
Yes, it's identified in the county's master plan for the county farm.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gruber?
So, before you run back there, Lisa.
Would you like a chair up here?
No, it's all right.
So in other terms, if we decide to give nothing, they would have to pay the full amount and take care of that to do the project, correct?
They would. I mean, they have to pick the number of projects that are going to meet the permit requirements to reduce the phosphorus.
So if we were going to do it, and we were planning it in our master plan, we were planning with the resources we already have, because some of it we can cover ourselves, but with our own labor... but with our own labor, so to speak, the thirty-three percent that you guys kinda pulled out is what, probably is what we might have spent on a project such as that, or what the project we're gonna do in the future?
No, I mean, the project in the future is gonna be like?
Would still be that amount?
Yeah, if not more, because I think the stream bank is a little longer than, yet than that. So, we have a little ways further yet to go.
Okay. Last but not least, us giving fifty percent of the rest, Brent or Brian, will that put us on the hook with other municipalities if this is to come up with them, and us having to look at it and say, well, past practice is, we gave this?
Here's what I can say, there's, there's legal precedent that you must follow when you're in court or in, in, you know, giving legal opinions and things of that nature, and then there's political precedence, which, that, that boils down to who's sitting in these thirty-one chairs when the next project comes up. That's probably the best answer I can give you.
That makes sense. Supervisor Lombard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I listen to this, I'm inclined to agree with the administrator, and I, I do believe this is going to set a precedent for future projects, not just this year or next year, but for the next whatever many years with municipalities, and I believe it will be at least partly political. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Pepper, this will be your second time, so I'm gonna go to Supervisor Regal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I have a question. As far as another municipality coming to us for a request, would we not have the argument that it was already in our master plan and a project that was going to be done?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Eber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's another aspect to this that we, we ought to take a look at, and this has been an ongoing conversation in the Finance Committee, and it's about the ARPA money. And Supervisor Tealyn said, well, if we don't help them, will this not get done? Every community has gotten this ARPA money, and they're all sitting there saying, where is the priority? And we've had the same discussion at the county as to how much ARPA money did we want to contribute to other, other projects. Everybody can find a project, but if you're, if you're a town or village, whatever, I don't know what could be more important than this kind of water control thing, and you're gonna have to get it done. So, I don't know what the village, the village of Loganville's doing with their ARPA money, and how they're prioritizing how they employ it, but it would seem to me, this is almost like an indirect subsidizing of their ARPA money. So, this is something they've got to do. I'm sure when they initially planned this project, they never dreamt that they would get an ARPA award. Nobody did, it wasn't on the, on the horizon. But if we, if we want to do this sort of thing, I think we have to be very careful because we are in fact helping them preserve that grant for some other purpose, when in fact, they have a, a purpose that's this important. I certainly understand Supervisor Flint's motivations, but I do think it's a bigger question and a bigger issue, and as I said, this is something the Finance Committee's been kicking around for probably a year. We just all got our money this week, the second installment of, of ARPA, and I don't have any idea how much Loganville got, or what they're gonna do with it, or whatever. But that certainly is a bonanza for all of us, and I just don't think we should be stepping in to do this. I do think the thirty-three percent was?
The, the village of Loganville received thirty-one thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and some change. I just looked it up.
Thank you, but I, I do think that, that is a consideration. That's, that's the box we're opening. Help them out so they can use their ARPA money for something else.
Thank you. Before I recognize a supervisor in the second round, I, normally I would go there to debate. I'm, I'm not attempting to debate, but I am trying to hopefully offer a little clarity, and I'm not, you can take it for what it's worth. We, we've had issues with how do we open up this Pandora's Box of supporting communities along the route? Thank you. Hey, look, I had an idea. No. So, so it's been an issue, and, and we don't wanna create this, this working environment where all of a sudden we're bailing people out of other problems. So, part of the problem with this situation is, is we've, we've got this store, this, this, this bank project that we're planning to do, whether or not Loganville has this issue, okay? So, if the county decides that they're going to do this, the beneficiary will in fact be Loganville, but I think you can separate the idea that we're not doing it for Loganville, because whether we do it now, or whether we do it five years from now, we will have to do it. So, the question would be, do we do it, or don't we do it? And the question then is, how much? And that's, that's up to you guys, have fun. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken in the first round that would like to? Seeing that nobody has, Supervisor Pepper, you have the floor for the second round.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your explanation was very good. In three, four, five years, if this does not pass, and the county decides to stream bank the county farm, who pays for that then, and at what cost?
You do.
The taxpayers.
Oh, no, you.
No, yeah, all right. I'll vote no on that motion. No, it's, it's all, it's all counties. So, actually, we're not helping Loganville as much as Loganville's helping the county if we pay fifty percent. We sure as heck shouldn't hang them on the hook for seventy, or sixty-six percent. I just think that's wrong. And did Loganville agree to a certain amount?
I don't know the answer to that. They have not.
Well, I don't know how we can vote on something if we don't have all the facts.
Marty, you, you do have the answer for Supervisor Krieger?
When this was brought to LRE Committee, and I'm, I think I'm correct in this, and Lisa will correct, correct me if I'm not, but the presentation by Mr. Muko, who is a consultant for the village of Loganville, he did not have a figure for the, for the county, that he did not have a specific, specific ask of the county. There was no dollar amount that was presented. Am I correct, Lisa?
Okay, thank you. Well, okay.
Yeah, I did. So, just to reiterate that, the county isn't bailing Loganville out as much as Loganville is paying for half of the stream banking for the county, and we're getting it done five years in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you did have the floor, I was just teasing. Supervisor Deeter, you're up.
Thank you. I'm just gonna state this for all future arguments about one district not wanting to pay for something. When Supervisor Lor suggested District Twenty-Six might not be interested in this expenditure, I'm quite positive District Twenty-Five, which includes Loganville, has paid for things all over the county, which doesn't directly benefit District Twenty-Five. We are responsible for water all over the county, and if this was a project we were gonna take on anyway, I think the optics is to look like a true partner and not like a, a backseat, helping you a little bit here, so. I really didn't know what the right answer was when this all started, but I feel like our responsibility is a little more obvious than thirty-three percent. Thank you.
Supervisor Donner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Supervisor Regal said, in that really the only reason that we're having this conversation tonight and this resolution is before us is because this project is on our property, it's on the county's property, and so, I don't think we're setting a lot of political precedence, because unless another project in the future comes up like this, that's on our, on our property, I don't think it's, we're obligated or have any precedence at all to pay for anything like this in the future. And I'd also like to agree with Supervisor Pepper that, yeah, basically, we're getting Loganville to pay for half of the cost of our stream bank, bank project on our property. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I see nobody else in the queue, and congratulations, it's the first time in a long time we've gone to the second round, so, that was exciting. Seeing no other supervisors in the queue, what we have before us now is the motion to amend, and the motion is to amend the 2022, so what we're gonna do is, the motion is to amend the original. So, the original is two-thirds, the motion is to mention it, to divide, to amend the resolution to be fifty-fifty split between the county, seventy-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for a county, same for the village of Loganville. So, once you vote on the amendment, then that would amend the original, and we would vote on the other. If you don't amend it, then we still vote on the first one, but we, that's where we're at. Does everybody understand that? Piece of cake. All right, so the motion to amend is before you. Yes means you are in favor of doing the fifty-fifty split, no means you are not. You may vote on the amendment now. This only requires a fifty percent. So, it is twenty-three supervisors in favor with eight supervisors in opposition. The resolution is amended. I will allow Michelle a second to cue this up. You now have before you an amended resolution. We do have an opportunity to continue debate if you so choose. Otherwise, we will vote on the motion as amended, and to somebody's point, this does now require a two-thirds vote because we are amending the budget. Supervisor Pepper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, when does the stream banking process start if we approve this? This summer yet?
I do not have the answer for that.
Lisa?
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Dietrich, would you like to debate from your chair, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We can talk about percentage, but I'd rather talk about simply the dollar amount, which was twenty-six thousand and some change, for forty minutes. Yeah, there's, there's questions as to whether or not, you know, Loganville could afford it, or, you know, what they're gonna use their, their ARPA fund money for. I, I thought we spent a lot of time on, on something where we had a capability of, of helping out a municipality where if they would divert their ARPA project, ARPA money to, to other projects, you know, the, you know, when we think about the floods in two thousand eight and two thousand eighteen, Laval and Rock Springs, and to a certain extent, Reedsburg got a lot of coverage, but Loganville got flooded too. So, you know, there's, you know, they could use that money to address the phosphorus issue, they could use it to address flooding in the years to come, and, and again, I'm, you know, I, I think we could get hung up on the percentage, but I, I prefer to get hung up on the dollar amount, which is twenty-six and some change. This is money well spent, you know, in a very reasonable and compassionate sense for, for our farming village.
Thank you, Supervisor Dietrich. Do other, this, are there any other supervisors who care to speak to the resolution before us? Seeing nobody in the queue at this time, you have Resolution Seventy-One, twenty-twenty-two, to amend the twenty-two, twenty-two budget, and that is an amended resolution reflecting a fifty-fifty share of proceeds, funding a stream bank project at the farm. Remember, this does require a two-thirds vote. You may vote on the amended resolution at this time. Thirty-one in favor, nobody in opposition, the resolution has passed as amended. That brings us up to, I gotta figure out where I'm at here. Property Committee Resolution Seventy-Two, twenty-twenty-two, authorizing a three-year contract with GLS Utility LLC to be the fiber locating service for Sauk County. We have a motion by Supervisor Gruber, second by Supervisor Regal. Somehow, there we go, I was like Smooth is in the queue, I don't know how he got there. Supervisor motion, Supervisor Gruber, do you care to speak to your motion?
Sure, we had lost, our last locating service had notified us that they no longer were, be servicing us, due to the size of our, our county or our system, I should say. So, they went out for bids, and this was the bid that came in the best for Sauk County. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Regal, do you care to speak to your second?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Does any other supervisor care to speak to Resolution Seventy-Two, twenty-twenty-two at this time? Seeing nobody else in the queue, you have before you Resolution Seventy-Two, twenty-twenty-two, authorizing a three-year contract with GLL, GLS Utility LLC to be the fiber locating service for Sauk County. You may vote on the resolution now. Thirty-one supervisors in favor with nobody in opposition and nobody abstaining or excused, the resolution has passed. Item number twenty, do we have any referrals? That is a no. Item number twenty-one, any new agenda items? Please submit them in writing or by email. Any new business items that county administrator sees as possible for board rule. Item number twenty-two, motion by Shell, second by Staley, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, folks, good meeting.